Mute your telephones until your opportunity to speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of November 17th to order. Members of the zoning board of appeals and myself, Joseph Burke, Frank Dunlop, Wendy Tarver, along with Patty DeCarr from Urban and Economic Development. Dane Colza is with us, Chief Building Inspector, and Kate Hartnett, Assistant Corporation Counsel. Brian, are you on with us tonight?
No, he's not.
He's not? Okay. We will hear each case individually as it appears on the agenda. When your case is called, please step up to the podium, or yeah, please state your name and address for the record. After listening to the applicant's proposal, I will ask for speakers for and against the project. All remarks and any questions are to be addressed to members of the board only, and shall be limited to two minutes per person. We will then vote on the project immediately following. Okay. First case, ZBA case number 44-20, 1407, 1417, and 1419 Dudley Ave. Applicant John and Alicia Crosby. Pursuant to section 2-29 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the installation of a fence at the above referenced location. Now, we tried listening to this, hearing this proposal at the last meeting, but they weren't present. Are we all present tonight? John and Alicia Crosby, are you here?
Apparently, apparently nobody is in attendance. It's up to the board whether or not you want to hear this or continue it to next month.
No, I think, you know, two months is enough now. We gave them the chance last month. They appeared first on the agenda this month. They're not here. They received all the proper notice.
So, this is offense has been previously installed. This is the area where the, of their property. And this is the newly installed fence.
I mean, Patty, you've met with these people. Do they think they don't need the proper approval to do that? Is that the idea?
I, I don't know.
Why don't we just move forward and have the codes department issue the ticket?
Absolutely. Sounds good, Mr. Colza. Thank you. So what are we doing in the meantime? Table this, or?
You're gonna have, if you're gonna have to, you've, you're hearing the petition, so I would ask if there's any speakers for or against.
Okay.
If the board so desires, it may deny the area variance.
Okay. Anyone on the WebEx who is for the project? Or against? Any motions out there?
I make a motion to deny. This is Frank.
Okay, Frank. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. ZBA case, Patty, they did get the proper notification, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure they did, yeah. Okay. ZBA case number 48-20, 756 Herkimer Road, applicant Karen Corrigan Rider, owner Green Garden Properties LLC. Pursuant to section 2-29, the applicant is seeking a use variance in order to reestablish a single-family residential property into a multi-family structure.
I'm present.
Is Ms. Corrigan Rider on with us tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
All right. State your case, please.
Okay, um, I, I'm not the owner of the property presently. Green Garden Properties is, I, I put in a bid to purchase the property, pending upon approval, to remodel the existing house into a five-unit apartment, according to code scenic and historic. There's parking probably available for 10 vehicles at this particular point in time. There is some extra property there that could, could use more if needed. Um, I'm not sure what else to say. I do know that there's residential zoning per Utica, but on the next door, at 823 Herkimer Road, there's a three-family. At 1036 Herkimer Road, there's a two-family, and at 1312 Herkimer Road, there's a two-family, which are all surrounding this particular building.
Well, you stated there are two families. You're proposing a five-family.
Uh, yes, I'm proposing, yes.
Okay.
Proposing a five-unit of building.
Five-unit building.
Yep.
Say what? No.
Can you please mute your telephone, please?
Yeah, who else is on?
This is Kathy Paul, and we have Sandra Colino.
Opportunity to speak. We'll call on you when it's turned.
With Peter Paul and Suzanne Lozen, we are all strongly opposed to this ordinance.
Ma'am.
Ma'am, please.
Okay.
It is not your opportunity to speak. When it is, we will call on you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Just hold on a minute, okay? Hold on.
Okay.
We'll get to you. Promise.
Okay.
Ms. Corrigan, if you wanted to just go on and speak as to, are you looking to put an apartment above the garage also? Would that be six units, or would that end up concluding with five?
Well, we were not, I was not sure about that. Um, but, you know, when I, I tell you what, when I looked at the property, the garage was an afterthought. When I looked at the property, um, what the Green Garden Properties had done was pretty much, um, taken out a lot of the walls in the house and kind of had plans to make it into a five-unit apartment. So, so when I looked at this to purchase that, um, of course, that was what I was looking at. I later found out that the, um, the plans that I had weren't stamped plans, which I should have known to begin with. But anyhow, I didn't purchase the property at its contingent upon a five-unit apartment going into the home. I would like to do something with the garage. I guess I wasn't certain, wasn't thinking about renting out it, but maybe something that was going to be owner occupied on occasion.
So you are looking to put a, a unit in the garage?
Yeah, which would make it six if I was able to do that, but the contingency on my purchase was for a five-unit apartment building in the home.
Okay. Any questions, Board?
Now, what's the current layout of the house? You said all the walls have been removed. I mean, uh, you know, the square footage is approximately? I mean, how many, how big are apartments? One-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? I mean, just to get an idea of what, what to expect here.
Well, when I walked through it a couple of times, the, the, the plans that apparently the previous builders were working off of, there was two apartments in the second floor that were one-bedroom. They're kind of like a fish in, they're kind of like a one-bedroom apartments, two of them. There was, um, one downstairs that was a one-bedroom. There was one more downstairs that had one of the bedrooms upstairs that would have been a two-bedroom. And then there was one off to the side that was another two-bedroom. So I guess that makes it three one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms, according to the, um, the layout that the previous owner had started.
When is the last time someone lived in this house?
Um, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I understand from speaking with the realtor that it was about a year and a half to two years ago. I mean, it could have been longer. That, like I said, that was a conversation that I had with the realtor, and that's what he thought.
Do you know if any permits were ever obtained? I don't believe so.
No, I, I, I don't, no. Well, when I, when I looked at the home to buy it, I, um, they had had some plans with it that I had looked at, and I went to see the architect with the plans, and he had notified me that they were not stamped plans, and they were, they did not go through, they had not gone through codes, so... So I don't, I don't, I don't know, but I don't believe they did. I can't say that for sure.
And you're not?
Patty?
Yeah?
Uh, my experience with this house, the last time I occupied was a three-family. It was a two-family house in the main structure with one unit in the rear.
Okay, so it has been utilized as a two-family?
It was originally a two-family house. A third family was added to the rear of the house, like an in-law apartment. Um, lower level, back of the house.
In the house itself? Okay.
Yeah, so in the connecting with the house itself. So there actually a three-family, was the last time it was occupied, not legally, but it was occupied as a three-family house.
And you're not proposing any changes to the footprint, no changes outside, correct?
I believe what they wanted to do, I'm sorry, I, I, I worked on with the architect on these old plans, what they wanted to do was convert the two-family main structure into a four-unit. Then have the fifth unit in the back of the house.
Okay.
So two units upstairs, two units downstairs in the main house, then one unit in the rear of the house.
Okay.
Um, I did just, I'm just gonna mention that wasn't what was on the plans, and that was, so I'm, I'm just gonna kind of go back to where I was. Um, the plans that I received, which again, they weren't stamped, and I don't know that the previous owner went through codes, but it did have, the plans did, um, they were selling it as a five-apartment building in the main house itself. Just...
Okay.
That's what I just said. Two units up, two units down, one in the rear, five units.
Okay.
Is there, is there, um, parking currently, or that would have to be added?
There is, um, there is parking. It will probably have to be expanded off to one side of, for, for five apartments, because sometimes when you have five apartments, somebody has more than one car. I mean, it certainly would fit six cars there. I, I think my realtor said 10. That might be close, but it would need a little bit of work to do the 10.
And where is the parking?
The building is set way back. It, um, it isn't out by the road. The building sits way back off of Herkimer Road, and there's a lot of land when you're driving down the driveway that you could expand out to be a parking area.
So you're looking to put parking in front of the house?
It would, it would more than likely be. There's some back, but there'd be, there'd be some in front.
Yeah, I don't think we went there. Okay. All right. Any other questions, Board?
Any other proposed changes to the outside of the property? Besides?
Um, just, well, the idea was to contact the Landmark Society that's, to talk to them about, you know, the historical needs from it, because it is quite an old building, and, and just try to fix it up accordingly. I mean, there really wasn't much change, it's just restoration.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone here for, anyone on for? Or against the project?
Yes, against.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Go ahead and speak.
Okay. We are strongly opposed to reestablish a single-family residential property into a multi-family structure at 756 Herkimer Road. The property should remain a house for a single-family living in keeping with the nature of the historic district and the land around it and the manner for which it was originally intended, where people can raise their families in peace without extra commotion disrupting the tranquility of their everyday lives. Our family has lived next door to this land since the 1950s and has had our yard adjacent to theirs. We should be entitled to living quietly in our own yard and not be overwhelmed with the extra people that five families would create, which is greatly multiplied over what one home would normally produce. It would be like living next to an apartment complex with parking garage and neighborhood park. It would also create more noise and movement than a regular household with car doors slamming and voices carrying, times five, waking us up at all hours. Not to mention bringing around more people who aren't always quality and not vested in the land, so don't have an interest in it, or the neighbors, which is all very disturbing. Over the past 60-plus years that we have called our property home, we have had many negative experiences. Renting people around us have come and gone, and we have had reckless activities just yards away from where our children were playing. Dogs wandered over to poop and go after our children, along with strangers that know the people living there, coming into our gardens, digging up our plants for themselves without even asking, along with cutting across our lawn. Yes, I know it's not a perfect world, and over the years, there will be some issues that arise, but it is manageable, one at a time, but terribly exhausting exponentially. Currently, we only have, um, single homes around us. That 823, 1036, and 1312 is down the roads and away from us. That really is inexcusable, where one comes to depend on their privacy and not to be on guard for security 24/7 around their own house. One would expect to know their neighbors and trust that they would respect us, not for us to have to pop up to investigate every new person wandering around our borders constantly. The frequent traffic of vehicles and lights coming and going up and down a single-lane driveway at all hours of the day and night, passing by our windows, is unsettling, because you have to stop and see who's coming around, which is different than the hum normally of the traffic out on the road. And increasing that traffic, um, parking spaces that's all alongside our house, where all those cars are gonna be right under our windows. Unfortunately, these instances have gone on repeatedly and have gone unresolved after many requests to remedy them. So speaking from experience, my point being, things can be said every time there's a new person involved, but once that status is granted, you cannot go back to your infringement-free atmosphere. Not only that, by granting multi-family in a place where there should only be one living, you are overwhelming the land from the quiet backyard, small wooded, serene backdrop, taking away the opportunity for the families to enjoy the natural creatures, like the bunnies that play about, because they're scared away all the time. Please don't take away what Utica has in historic residential area before filling up all available commercial areas first. It isn't necessary. There's other locations for sale that are multi-family that you don't need to rezone next door to us. Please put businesses with businesses, not with homes. A five-unit, and now you're talking six, would say at the least, two cars each would put even like 10 cars in the driveway, which would create now a parking lot where you're looking at machines. Then you have to add visitors' vehicles that would definitely magnify that situation as well. Now, more than ever with COVID-19, that has become a real part of our everyday life, we have to maintain social distance and be very careful of all the numbers of people around us. It's a fact that more families create more instances, litter is generated around us that blows over to our lawn, that we have to pick up and get misaddressed mail that we have to touch. Garbage night every week will be five times greater, spread out across the front of the house we pass by on our family walk with the dog. It's a very scary thought to now think you can't even be safe in your own yard that your family has sheltered in, planned out, and prepared for all their lives. It would become more like a prison in our own room, trying to protect ourselves from all, all the activity so close to us that we can't roam free in our own space. We implore you to hear us. This property is within the Scenic and Historic Preservation District, being located on Herkimer Road in North Utica between Leland Ave to the Scholar Town Line. We are outstanding law-abiding citizens. We pay our taxes on time. We're hard workers and just want to live where our roots were planted not too long after North Utica became a part of Utica. We want the land to remain one household next to us, and the reason that we settled here, to continue the residential life that for four generations in our family and those to follow, we can say are proud to appreciate it in the neighborhood and the city. So in looking forward to the future, how can the citizens of Utica feel comfortable knowing that if they wanted to settle and stay here, all they have worked for all their life was for naught, because the rules were just up and changed around them, and it doesn't matter that your family has been loyal going back decades? It isn't fair for someone to come in and get to change the land to meet their needs when it doesn't coincide with the general consensus of the area and those already living in it as it was. We want to preserve the nature in the land and the artifacts in the ground and the serenity of a neighborhood. So also, there should be no reason to put an additional housing unit for their residents on the land, since they already have one to live in, but they want to rent it out like a business instead. We do not want our property in good faith to be next to more and more overcrowding. So in keeping with the Scenic and Historic Preservation Commission's goal to keep well-preserved historic property that's a valuable asset to the community, please do not rezone 756 Herkimer Road. Let it remain single-family residential. Thank you for your time and your true consideration.
Oh, can you please state your name and address, though, please, for the record?
Yes, this is Kathy Paul, along with Sandra Colino, Peter Paul, David Paul, um, along with Suzanne Lozen. Uh, I live at 752 Herkimer Road, Utica, New York, 13502, right next door to the driveway of this building, and the garage is in the backyard right next to where we have our picnics, where we lay our blanket down and live.
I have to remember, you got that all in another two minutes, I have to say. Thank you.
Well, speaking for all of us, I, I just want you to know.
No, I know, I know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, what, you know, it's really, you know, uprooting.
Were you living there when the house was, was a four-unit structure? Because apparently it was a four-unit?
It was never, it was never a four-unit structure. They had somebody buy it, and whatever they were doing, cleaning inside or doing something inside, but there hasn't been anybody living.
Been abandoned for a long time.
It's been abandoned for years, like, uh, at least maybe almost 10 years it's been abandoned. And there hasn't been people there. No living conditions. It's been boarded up and, yeah.
But was, was it ever a three-unit, two or three-unit before that?
They did, they did rent, they did rent the upper and lower before, and that's when we had all these problems with their dogs not being on leashes more than once. One came and bit my, uh, son, one, um, then they, and they were coming and pooping in the yard, and then we had them all hours of the night, 2:00 in the morning, um, people, cars coming slamming the car doors. You know, our windows are open. We get, um, woken up. There are noises, you know, from, from all that. If it's not a single-family residential home, you have tenants coming and going, and they're not vested in the land and, and with the neighbors. Sometimes they're just temporary portions, and it's not a very, um, ideal living situation in a residential area.
Now, if, if, you don't mind me asking, but you're, you're, you're right next door then, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
You're, you're a single-family home, is that correct?
Yes, yes, we are. And we also have, um, yes, across from us is also single-family, and across from them is single-family and kitty corset. All the houses, yes, around us are all single-family.
Okay.
And across the street. There are no businesses and apartment houses and multi right here.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but this, this structure has been utilized as a two or three-family house since the early 80s, correct?
From the inside of it, it looked like it has been for sure. I mean, it was set up and they had...
I was asking the neighbor.
It was originally, um, the same family that, that was living in it.
But it was, it was a multi-family. Was Mr. Corodory?
Yes.
Yeah, he, he occupied it as a three-family?
Yes.
Okay. The last time it was occupied, that, that plan was a three-family unit?
Originally, it was their family, and then once they passed on, they had the extra place, and then they did rent it as another family.
Right, a, a three-fam, a three-unit house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But it was originally one, to begin with, when it was built, looked like ours was built. And then they had their family split, and that's what, what caused that to happen. Not big business. So once that family was done.
Right, but the last, the last legal, the last legal use of this house was a three-family house?
Yes, but however it's been abandoned, yes.
Right, but the last legal use was three-family?
Well, I don't know for sure, but, um, okay.
Well, the rec, the records show that it was used as a three-family.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm just a neighbor. I'm not on the books, so, you know.
Yeah.
You know, for that, all I know is the comings and goings.
I'm, I'm sure you must remember that.
Yes, even with the three families. I'm saying, I don't know the legal, um, listing of it. All I know is, you know, you know, when my grandparents were here and the Corodores was here, it was one family. And then, and then after that, they had put in the others, because they had their family expand, and then when their family died off or left off, that's when it had the extra space. But what I'm saying is, just because something was, was altered, doesn't mean that that should be, in keeping with historic, continued.
Okay, all right.
The three-family makes sense.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
You're welcome. Anyone else out there against?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Your name, please?
Uh, she, this was Sandra Colino. She was just saying that she's in agreement with what we just said.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right.
And also, this is Suzanne Loosen. I'm the sister of Kathy Paul. I'm residing in Arizona right now and just dialed into the meeting because the house has been in our family for years. And I agree with, um, the testimony that my sister provided that we are against the rezoning of a multi-unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Patty, should I read this in the CCor?
Yep.
I'm sorry, what, Patty?
Yeah, go ahead with the CCor recommendation.
Recommendation, okay. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine, five sixty-eight of the zoning ordinance of the City of Utica, and in accordance with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the City of Utica Zoning Board of Appeals has declared itself as the CCRRA lead agency for this proposal. It's 756 Herkimer Road. The zoning board identified the project as an unlisted action under CCRRA and reviewed the short environmental assessment form. No coordinated review is required. The Zoning Board of Appeals has concluded that no moderate to large impacts will be made by this proposal. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration for the CCRRA requirement for ZBA case number four-eight dash two-zero. Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you can go ahead and, uh, discuss or make a motion for the case itself.
Okay, all right. Well, any motions out there?
You may want to review the criteria for a use variance.
You guys out there, the board there?
Yeah, Joe, I, I'm not comfortable with voting on us, uh, as, as is without actually seeing what the five-unit plan was, is. Uh, so, I would not be able to support a five-unit for this particular property, even though I'm a little on the fence because it is such a massive property. They have over three acres, but it is only limited to the house itself. And looking at it and listening to, you know, the previous, what it was used for, and I understand that at some point, people had a massive family and needed such a massive house. But, you know, times have changed and people don't really have that many kids. They don't need that many, you know, they don't live together as, as used to be before. So, I understand where it was broken up to possibly into a two or three-family. But anything over three-family for that house, I, I, I wouldn't be able to support.
How about anything smaller, Ned?
Like I said, uh, a, a, uh, three-family is what I would be comfortable with. Because that's what it's been, uh, before. Uh, it is, uh, but e- even with that, I, I would like to see, you know, a parking plan, uh, you know, some lighting. I mean, something where, you know, we need to know exactly how things are going to operate to not disturb the neighbors, obviously, because this is a unique property. It's not a, yeah. So.
We surely don't want any parking in the front.
Absolutely not, absolutely. So, um, like, like I said, uh, you know, they do have plenty of property there, but I, I don't know per se, because they don't really own the property, if that three-unit is going to make it feasible for them, you know. So, it's, it's, it's going to be really odd to them. That, that would be my suggestion and, and my stand on it.
Well, we can make a motion on that, Patty, can't we?
You're sure.
Three-unit?
Yep.
Ned?
Yeah, like I said, I, I, I'd be willing to make that motion. Uh, I don't know if there's any, anybody else has anything else?
I'd like to, I'd like to know more about the layout, how it's going to lay out the three-family, how it's going to be designed, you know, parking, that kind of stuff.
So, you want, you want to, on table, I give them a chance to do that, or?
I would suggest tabling the application and asking for further documentation.
Yep, I'd be more comfortable with that as well.
Okay.
So, that's based upon a three, uh, two to three-family?
Yes, I believe, I believe they're talking three-family mass.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, I'll make a motion table, or did you?
Can you, hold on, hold on. Ned, can you go through the items that you'd like to see for the next zoning board meeting, please?
Well, I'd, I'd like to see at least the interior layout, uh, as Frank mentioned, uh, just to see how it's going to lay out, you know, how comfortable it's going to be. You know, uh, it's going to be able to tell you really how much, how many people are going to be able to really, uh, utilize the space. Uh, and then, uh, second, secondly would be the parking situation. Uh, that would have to definitely encompass whatever, uh, you know, three units would, would need, and then obviously, uh, people coming over and visiting. So, uh, you know, to that aspect, um, you know, actually, you know, motion lights and things like that, I think it's pretty standard in any type of house. But, uh, we, we do definitely want to see that. It does, this property has sit, you know, quite a bit back off the road, so we do want to see, you know, if those lights or that type of traffic will interfere with neighbor, neighboring houses and so forth.
Okay, I just want to make one. I just want to make one point. That, under our current zoning, parking is not permitted in the front yard. So, um, Ms. Corrigan Rider, when you are creating this parking plan that they're asking for, please keep in mind that you can't have any parking beyond the front edge of the house.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Does somebody want to second?
Yeah, does anybody want to add to that list, or?
Should we see? Well, figuring out the plans.
We pretty much narrowed it to three, correct, Ned?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I'm good with that, absolutely.
Anything you wanted to add? Hold on, Wendy, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, nothing I wanted to add. I just was questioning, or they're going to limit this to like three apartments, which I think is best.
Okay, so I have Ned, Ned making the motion table, and Wendy seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
ZBA case number fifty dash twenty, Eleven Shelley Place, applicant Schmedjek Construction. Pursuant to section, who's this? So, you can handle this part of it. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order, in order to construct an addition to the rear of the home at the above-referenced property. Okay.
I'm sorry, what's, trying to speak. Can I help you?
So, so are we done, or do we, is that meeting over for us, or do we still stay on the line?
It's done.
No, you're on that.
Okay, so we can hang up now?
Yep.
Yes, yep.
Thank you. And then if there's anything further, are we going to receive another letter in the mail, or do we come back next month?
You'll receive a letter again in the mail for next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome, have a great night.
You're welcome.
You too, bye now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who signs? Mr. DiCarlo on?
No, uh, this is Ned. I'm going to be, uh, speaking on, on behalf of Mrs. DiCarlo and on behalf of the construction company.
Okay.
Uh.
Go ahead, state your case, please.
Wait, hold on, Patty, this will have to be unanimous, correct?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
This will have to be unanimous vote in order to, uh, make a motion. Because Ned, can you just state that you will be abstaining?
Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting on this case.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, what we're proposing to do is add in addition to the existing house, um, and it's, uh, two parts. It's, uh, one part is going to be a master bedroom, which is, uh, twenty by thirty, and the second part is the garage, uh, that's going to be twenty by thirty as well. Uh, our side yard setback is, uh, going to be about five feet. It's actually going to be a little over five, but it's, we'll call it five feet on the one corner. And we're only asking is if you look into this picture, you see the, the shed on the right side of the picture, in that corner is the five foot. The rear corner is, uh, over fifteen feet, so, so it's technically, it's only the one spot that, that we have an issue with. Uh, this property is very unique, and it's shaped oddly where uh, there's no other way of making this happen, uh, without needing that setback. Uh, we're going to side the house to ma, I mean, side the addition to match the house completely, uh, the shingles, the doors, the windows, um, everything else that it tells.
You can see on this drawing, or how the, how the property line is.
Yes.
Yeah, so, the driveway is right, obviously going to be right where it, it's existing driveway that leads from the road to the garage.
Sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Bear with me, bear with me.
What am I supposed to do, Ned? I usually ask you.
So, Ned, will the garage, the garage will be setback, correct?
Yes, correct. It's going to be setback. It's going to be actually even with the, uh, backside of the house. So, the rear side of the house, that's how far back it is, I think it's roughly twenty-five feet or so. Uh, the, the reason for that, one of the main reasons is if we went any further towards the, towards the front of the road, would even, uh, start getting closer to the property line and not even be able to, to have a garage there.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, board? Anyone here for the project? Anyone against? Okay, I'll make a motion.
I got a quick, I got a quick question. What's the height going to be? Is it, is somewhere in there?
No, it's going to match that house. It's actually, because the, the, that shed that's attached there currently, uh, or half garage, whatever it is, uh, we took that, we took that down, and that's real low. That, that's literally sits on, uh, on some pillars a- a- and it's only like six and a half feet tall inside. So, now, obviously, we, we need to match the floor elevations inside the house. Uh, so, obviously, that's got to come up about roughly about sixteen, eighteen inches, and the roof line will be even with the house, maybe a little bit below that. That's it.
Okay.
Ned, Ned does good work. I don't think we have to worry on this. Okay, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Right. You're all set, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Frank, Frank, can you tell, make sure you get some permit?
You gotta get, you gotta get a permit, Ned.
You know, you know about that, right, Frank?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, ZBA case number fifty-one dash twenty, five fifteen to five nineteen, Rutgers Street. Applicant William Milham. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct a shed at the above-referenced location.
Okay, um, the applicant tried calling in. He had some difficulties. He's elderly. Um, so I did tell him that I, I would speak on behalf.
Okay.
Hold on one second, I'm just trying.
Pull up the pictures, Patty.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay. I have somebody calling.
Who is he, Sheila?
Can you hear me?
I don't think so, can I?
We can hear you. Who is this?
Hi, Patty. It's, it's Polly.
I'm sorry?
No.
Nevermind.
All right, for some reason, this is not working. Um, let me see. There we go. Okay, so, as you'll see, um, this is a diagram of where, where he's looking to place the shed. He's actually looking to place the shed, uh, approximately four feet away from his existing house, um, facing the street.
You see Rutgers Street, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll show you the photo of his house. The reason for this is, um, you see this, um, let me see if, you see this garage on the right-hand side? That, the house on the corner and that garage, um, are in the process of being sold. So, he's looking for storage for anything that he has, um, from that garage. He's looking to place in a shed, um, next to his garage. As you'll see, he has, um, ample driveway space what's created quite some time ago. Um, so he's looking to, um, possibly put the door facing the driveway just to make it easier for him to get in and out. He does have to leave, um, some space between his existing garage and the shed because there's a man door on that side of the shed.
Okay. I'm sure he got all the right permits to cut that curb and make that drive, that's like a road. That's like a highway.
Yeah, that's been there for quite.
Quite some time.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Mr. Milham was imported a lot of luxuries back in the day.
Oh, yeah.
So, um.
Okay, all right.
You know, he's looking for, he's looking for twelve by fourteen.
He's got a lot of room for that.
Plenty of room.
And he, he will have to consolidate those two lots. And I did explain to him.
And he get a shed.
Do you have, I do have a letter in support of.
Patty? Patty, it's going to be a garage door in this. Why does he just call it detached garage?
Um, I don't know, just because it's the size of a shed and it's a shed, you know.
Okay, continue, please.
Greetings, my neighbor William Milham is building a shed in his backyard, and I have received a letter to attend a meeting to show my support or anger against this. I am writing to you today to advise you that I am all for Mr. Milham building whatever he pleases on his property. I say yes, please allow Bill to build on, to his property. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Dino and Suffolk Juikic.
Patty, he, he wants to go four feet from the existing garage, but he said that, where's the door? I don't see a door in the picture. Is there a door? He said he, he needed to go four feet because of side door.
There's a door on the shed.
Oh, the shed, okay, all right.
Apparently, he's buying it free bill. And it's going to be, it's going to be sided to match his house. Joe, do you want to ask for against?
Anyone, uh, anyone else sign for the proj, the project or against? Anyone, anyone else sign for the project or against? It looks like all one big parcel anyways on that area from, from Milham's all the way down.
Yeah, it isn't, it isn't currently. It will need to be.
Any motions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Get to this one. ZBA case number fifty-two dash twenty, twenty-three oh six, Genesee Street. Applicant Thomas Droz. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine, the applicant is seeking an area variance wired parking at the above referenced location. Okay, who's on for the applicant?
This is Donald there, the engineer that drew the drawings that you see in front of you. And Mr. Thomas Droz is also on, uh, who is one of the owners of the existing building. If you'd like, I will speak first as to what the design shows. And Mr. Droz will discuss the current use and occupancy of the building. And as we note in our proposal, the building is for sale. And it's my understanding that some of the people that have looked at the building have asked if it is compliant with the, with the city's ordinances as far as parking for a building of five thousand square feet on the first and second floors.
Um, Mr. Air, the parking, as you know, is determined by the use, not necessarily the size of the building.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the use, and then, then the size of the building comes into play. I understand that.
Right, right.
That's true. And as I say, I'll let Mr. Droz discuss the offers that he's had and maybe what he's had to back away from or put on hold. We could get a determination from the zoning board of appeals on this. The, uh, what we had proposed, well, let's start out now. The existing is a five thousand square foot building on the property. To the east of the building is the campus of Our Lady of Lord's Church and their school. To the west is a CPA firm and a building. Across the street, there are existing businesses and, and I believe some residential use might still be there. I couldn't see signs for everybody. The, uh, current situation is that on the property, there are, right now, six available parking spaces on the property. Here in the rear, a paved parking lot. Two are in the existing garage at the back of the building. And there's one on a short driveway that exists in front of the building. A driveway that basically, it's a paved asphalt driveway that goes nowhere and is used for parking for this building. Oh, upside down, thank you. The concept is, is that, uh, until we have a valid offer, we can't tell you exactly how many parking spaces might be required. If this was all office, uh, with the five thousand square feet, your ordinance says four and a half parking spaces per one thousand square feet, which would bring the total parking requirement up to twenty-two and a half parking spaces. If, uh, under an alternate scenario, if the first floor was an office or a doctor's, uh, and it was residential on the second floor, and I'm not saying that that's what it would be, because until we can market the building adequately and know exactly what parking variance would be allowed by the ZBA board, you, on the board, we would have to market it in accordance with that. The proposal that I drew up, and I apologize for putting two parking spaces in front of the building on the new driveway. Uh, that driveway, we were looking to put in, uh, in additional seven parking spaces along that driveway. And given the information that you've informed me of that parking could not be in front of the building, although there is one space there now, uh, that we would have to cut that back to five additional parking spaces. We're also reconfiguring the parking in the back parking lot to provide five parking spaces and the two in the garage. So what I had shown here was a total of fourteen parking spaces. And, uh, you're saying I can only have the twelve because two of them are in front of the building, even though to the, it's on the east side of the building, and even the, uh, there is no building on that side. There's only the driveway and a wide open space in front of Our Lady of Lord's property. I don't know if that makes any difference, but the code is the code. What the attempt here was, was to provide as much parking space as could be provided on this point-two-seven acre property to, uh, take some of the existing, uh, parking load off of the Genesee Street and possibly the parking lot of Our Lady of Lord's. Uh, there might have been some casual use in the past. And to provide as much as we could on the property itself and look for a variance for the difference, which was, uh, you know, could range between two additional parking spaces or, as I mentioned, the twenty-two or whatever parking spaces, which would be, uh, we would still fall short of that maximum. The, uh, building itself would not be changed or altered. Uh, we've shown the city's required hedge along the property line to shield the view of this parking from, uh, the adjoining driveway of Our Lady of Lord's. I will point out that at present, uh, there is oftentimes cars parked along that driveway that would extend pretty much all the way to the street. Patty, you had indicated there was some concern about the driveway and its proximity to the traffic light, uh, for Proctor Boulevard and the Lady of Lord's exit driveway. The, uh, what we've tried to show here is that this driveway that you see on the easterly side of the building, northeastally side of the building, would be an entrance driveway, and we also showed on the plan the use of, uh, extension of the driveway from the back rear parking lot along the side of the building, which is the old location of a, a very old driveway. It's just two strips of concrete, and that would be the exit driveway. So, uh, while Our Lady of Lord's has not come up and put a fence barring us from using their driveways and, uh, parking areas, uh, they, uh, from what I understand, and Mr. Droz can speak to this further, is that they have indicated that they're not happy, uh, with that situation. So we basically are trying to create a loop driveway situation and trying to provide as much parking as we can on this property. And we'd like to have a variance that would allow us, uh, let's say, uh, with the fourteen spaces we have, a variance of eight parking spaces. That would bring it up to, uh, that would be a total of twenty-two, so that the building could be offered for sale to someone who might wish to occupy the building first and second floors as office. That's the basis of the drawing. And now I'd like to turn it over to Tom Droz, and he can speak to, uh, his ownership of the building and the current use of the building. They do use both floors now. Uh, I can't tell you how many realtors occupy the space. I think he can deal with that. And, uh, so, Tom, if you could take over at this point.
One minute. Can I ask you a question? So you're proposing that the new driveway is gonna be an entrance, right?
Yes.
And then the existing driveway is gonna be an exit?
Yes.
Okay. There is no other use for the existing driveway, can't go to the back of the building?
I'm sorry, what?
The existing driveway that's there now, you, you plan on using that, propose to use that as an exit? Is that correct?
Yeah, by, by extension to the rear of the building, yes.
Okay, but that's not extended to the rear of the building now?
No, but if you look at the plan, that's part of what we had proposed was extending that driveway.
So you do have that option to extend that, the existing driveway to the back of the building now, correct? Uh, this driveway here, you can extend that to the back of the building?
Yeah.
And as much as you plan on using it as an exit, you can extend it to the back of the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
It was in the past, and you can see that it's, uh, just two strips of concrete is what it was.
Right, I see that, I see that. But you plan on, that's gonna be your exit lane, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they, they can be extended to the back of the building?
Yes, it can.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have you, have you declared a use of the building yet?
Yeah, so if I could, I thank you for that. Yeah, so the building for almost forty years now has been the home of Cogwell Banker Faith Properties. So it's been used as a real estate office. Uh, that is who the current, there, there are tenants now. I used to own Cogwell Banker Faith Properties, but I sold the business, and they have been tenants. They are leaving as of January first. They found a different home. Uh, so obviously, the, what we'd like to be able to do is sell the building potentially as another office building, just as it is now. Uh, in the past, we used the, uh, there's no way to enter and exit our current parking that's, that exists behind the building without going over Lady of Lord's property. Uh, discussed it with Lady of Lord's. Lady of Lord's basically told me that they're not going to allow someone else to use their, to entrance and exit over their property in the future. So we need to come up with a plan that encompasses our full parking on the property that we own now.
Well, correct, but you don't know what the occupant load is going to be at this.
I'm assuming it's, we've had several people look at the building. Most of the, most of the uses have either been as an office building or a mixed use of an office building with potentially a rental upstairs.
Okay.
A residential.
You don't know the current, then you don't know the proposed use or the proposed occupant load. So you're kinda like putting the cart before the horse here.
How many paintings?
I think at this point.
Not really. I, I, no one's ever gonna buy the building without having that resolved before they put an offer in.
And if this, why don't you just get a curb cut permit? Put a driveway in and use your existing parking for what it is?
But we wouldn't be able to exit? You have a one, you have a one-way lane. Huh?
If you created your new driveway, get a curb cut permit on the side, on the north side of the house. And just use your existing parking.
Yeah, but then again, well.
And not, and not do parking along that new driveway?
Yeah. Let the new owner, you know, propose what he's gonna have. Maybe he doesn't need all those spaces.
Well, we wouldn't build it unless they did need it, so that would be correct.
But to go over this again, if they just use the first floor, the two thousand five hundred square feet at, uh, four and a half parking spaces per one thousand, we would still need, and I'll get a calculator so I don't misspeak, uh, four and a half times one and a half. The minimum, well, that's six point seven five, and right now, on the property, there's only, uh...
But then you'd still have a bare minimum upstairs of a, of a two, like two units.
Can I ask a question here? I, I don't know if I, what I'm missing here, but there's an existing driveway there now, correct? With the concrete pads that you plan, that you plan on using as an exit, correct?
Correct, correct.
So you're saying that that, that's gonna have to be connected to the back of the building, correct? So you're gonna be able to go in one way and come out the other. So why can't you just use that now as a driveway to go behind the building?
Yeah, I, I, I understand that question, but then there's no exit. You need to have a separate, you can't have a one, a one-lane road as the both entrance and exit.
Well, all, all the other business, properties and businesses along there all have one driveway. You currently have a driveway.
Then you need turnaround space. You wouldn't be able to come in and out of there, as I, as I see it. There's not enough space to turn around and whatnot.
And that also, that driveway on that side is only eight feet wide, whereas the proposed.
And that, that picture you're looking at, just kind of interject there. If the picture you're looking at, where that little back of the building is there, that little shed there, that's, that corner cuts across diagonally across that parking lot and is all Lady of Lord's. So virtually, the first four cars you see parked there are on Lady of Lord's property. They're not on our property.
Does your property go right to the driveway?
No, that's what, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. If you look at that back corner of the shed.
No, I, I mean on the side. On the side of the building, the Lady of Lord's driveway side, does it go right to the driveway?
No, it does not. It's, it's well short of that. So if you look at that strip right there, if you stop that picture there, where the telephone pole is, which is the second one to the left, that's, that's the property line. So that big space in between there is all Lady of Lord's. And that's what I'm showing you on the back. When you're looking at it, it looks like our land. It isn't our land. That's all, most of those cars you just saw parked there are on Lady of Lord's property.
Patty, could you put up the site plan?
Yep.
Please?
Sure. Bear with me.
All right. You see that diagonal line across the back there?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, as I say, most of those cars in the actual photograph, those first four cars that you saw there are all on Lady of Lord's property. I'm, I'm estimating the fourth car is probably straddling the line.
The other aspect of this is if, if you look at that picture also, you'll note that there's two or three cars parked on the exit driveway for Lady of Lord's. And those are certainly, that's certainly not on our property either. But the fact is, is even if we use the downstairs only as office and the upstairs as one or two living units, we're gonna need something closer to eleven parking spaces. And so we're looking for a way to provide a reasonable number of parking spaces so that, and to have a variance for the difference. Now, yes, we don't have a purchaser now, and part of the reason we don't have a purchaser is that we don't have.
Parking. Exactly. So anybody that's coming to looking at the property, again, that, my whole background is in real estate. It's what I've done my entire life. No one is gonna put an offer on this property subject to getting parking approved sometime down the future. You know, I, I've been working on this thing myself since July. You know, no one's gonna wait around. If their parking's not already approved, they're not gonna purchase the property, period.
It can be contingent upon zoning a board approval though, correct?
In theory, but not in practicality. An offer would not come in like that. They're not gonna wait around in this market or any market and wait around for months and months and months to, you know, secure this building.
We just had, we just, we just, we just had somebody applying for a use variance whose offer was contingent. I mean, it's very common.
And I understand that this is a business use. So again, we could, we could debate what would, would not happen. This is what I've done my entire life is real estate. So we've already, we've already talked to people, and they've said, we're not interested unless you have parking. So I've already been told this. I talked to other realtors just to get other realtors' point of view other than Cogwell Banker. They told me the exact same thing, you know, you know. So I, I'm not just going by my own judgment, but I've also talked to other experts in your market. also talked to other experts in your marketplace, and everyone has told me the exact same thing, including Caldwell Banker Faith Properties who's current there, uh, you know, so, we're not gonna be able to sell the building without having a parking plan at least available. Again, if it's built or not is another question, but we need to have a plan where someone can come in and say, hey, you know, you know, not only will it work for me, but it also will work for the next buyer that they sell it to down the road.
Patty? How many spots are currently in the back?
Well, currently in the back, there are three spots that are fully within uh, the Caldwell Banker property, and there's two parking spaces in the garage under the building, so that's a total of five.
And we, we lose two parking spots by opening up that driveway, so they currently use that driveway frequently with two cars parked there.
Yeah, in the front.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it clear to them where those spaces are.
Right, but you're, right, my point is, you're, you're, you're losing a space as soon as you open it up as a drive.
Patty, are you there? Missed, missed a car? Yes.
There's frequently two cars parked in that front, yeah. Don, I think I sent you a, a picture from Google Earth that shows that in fact.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, they have the picture with one there right now.
Yeah, so usually they have someone that's working there all day, they pull up, pull up, and then they leave a spot behind them.
Patty?
Yeah.
Question for, yeah, um, what if, what would be the concept here, if we built this driveway with the, uh, with the additional spaces and eliminating the two that are in front of the building? And then they got a purchase offer, and then we went for a variance on the number of parking spaces? Would that be a better plan?
Build, build the proposed driveway?
Build the proposed driveway, short the parking spaces one and two, which you object to because they're in front of the building.
Right.
Build the proposed, okay, build that, then you're saying, or the concern here was, then get an offer on the building, then go back, and then come back to the ZBA for a variance on the number of spaces? Would that be a way of dealing with this? I'm not trying to eliminate anybody, I'm just saying, the zoning board of appeals, uh, the chairman is concerned about getting a variance when we don't even know necessarily what the proposed use is.
Right, and that, that would be, it was the code department.
Hold on one second. Don, you would still have to receive a scenic and historic review and approval?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you're aware.
Just to make sure, make sure we're all on the same page, I, I don't have a problem with saying, the driveways as, as shown is approved, and then the variance would be contingent, yeah, that would be fine. I, I, so th, those are two different, two different things.
Patty, th, this is Celeste Friend, are, are you going to discuss the police's, added, the police's assessment of this, um, in terms of how it intersects with Genesee?
Councilwoman, we're gonna, we're gonna get to that, to the for and against, soon as, soon as the, the applicants have their opportunity here, we will, we will address that.
Yep.
And I don't believe the police department realized that one was an entrance and one was an exit.
Well, we're, we're still not talking about, we're not on the police department yet, please.
I mean, to be honest, I didn't, I didn't realize that either. Is it stated on this drawing at all?
Uh, no, unfortunately, it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I, I don't, Joe, I don't have a question, but I, I, I do have an issue with, I, how do you, you know, vote on something that you don't know what the use is gonna be, so it's a, I, I, it, you know, whatever the use could come in, and all of a sudden, you need more spaces than you have, I mean, this is a, you know, he's very limited to what he could create there, so, there's, I'm not gonna be able to tell him that one way or the other, that he could create more or less, because there's only X amount of space, uh, and uh, whatever use he, he tells me, or tells us, is gonna be able to determine, and we're gonna try to make a judgment on, is that gonna be, you know, sufficient for that property? Uh, that, that's how I see it, Joe, uh, so I, I, I don't see myself being able to go one way or the other on this, until we know a use, uh, that, that, that's really.
Can I, can I ask you a question, I totally understand, that makes sense to me, what you're saying, but, that's, that's about the approval of the variance as far as, would you approve it? How about just having this approved, the plan approved, and then I gotta worry about having a, uh, someone come in that, uh, fits that parking pattern?
I don't have an issue with the plan, other than the parking, uh, situation in the front, uh, so, uh, I thought we were just talking about, uh, eliminating space, reducing the spaces, but, like I said, I don't have an issue with the plan other than the front, but I don't know the rest of the board, or what's going on with this police thing, 'cause I haven't heard about it, but, you know, tune in, and, uh.
I would just ask on the front, I, I, I get what you're saying on the front, but again, I, if you go two blocks in either direction on Genesee Street there, there's three, four properties that have parking in the front of some sort.
What, what, not in front of the residences, no they don't, where do you see that?
Well, I, I, Don, do you have, do you have those pictures that I provided you from Google Earth?
Uh, I can send them to Patty if she gives me an email, or actually, I have her email.
Unfortunately, Don, I'm not on my own computer, so.
Oh, great, is there any way I can share them, I have them on my computer, do, I don't know how to use this.
They do have parking in the front, I'm sure they only have one driveway.
No, some of them are loop driveways.
Yeah, half, half-circled driveways.
Okay.
So again, literally across the street, down a block, they, they, they got that situation where they just have a, a kind of a U shape in front of their, their property, that's their entire parking.
All right, I, I have a question in regards to this plan, to the right of the new driveway you're proposing, uh, are all those parking spaces to the right of it? Or is it just the one in the front, and then the one at the back, 'cause it's not very clear, it's not coming out clear? So if you're facing a property from Genesee Street, the, the new driveway, uh, are all of those parking spaces?
Yeah, those first two are, well, even the first two are partially in front of the, uh, the porch.
Okay, go, go towards the rear of the property, to, and right of the property, those are all parking spaces?
That's up and down the side, right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they're parallel spaces along the side of the driveway.
Okay.
On the right-hand side of that driveway, there were, one, two, three, four, there were five spaces, but that's gonna get cut down to four if we take out the first one. On the left-hand side of the driveway, there were two, but that's gonna, would be cut down to one, to stay away from being in the front yard.
Yeah, I think that both of those first, well, the first one, uh, that's on the right, that's gonna interfere with your sign that's currently there, or if it's gonna ever have a place, obviously, and then the other one, I, I definitely don't see, see that happening in front of the house, like.
Joe, and we, we understand that now that we've gotten the comment, but.
Yeah.
When we, when I laid this out, unfortunately, I was not aware that, I was looking at this as being a side yard, not a front yard.
And, and I appreciate this hypothetical, but let's just say for argument's sake, that uh, another real estate company just like is in there now, wanted to move in. Now, is it gonna, if we add those, all those parking spots, is that gonna be approved? Is that gonna be, they've been there for forty?
I think it's gonna depend on the real estate company, how many people they have, how many vehicles they expect to have, uh, you know, it's, if it's gonna, uh, we, if you're gonna have to, on some start using your neighbor's parking lot again, you know, that's, it's, that's, it depends on that, you know, if it's a small, uh, three, four, five, six guys, then, you know, it's not, but if it's another Caldwell Banker, and, and.
My, my concern is that, is the cars parking along the driveway, when they go to leave, they're just gonna go through Lady of Lourdes' parking lot again, and it sounds like that.
They very well may fence that off.
The, the, the direction is that they should go.
If they don't fence it off, I'd be very happy, I, I would love to have them not fence it off, but I met with them, and my impression is, if, if it's continuing to be used on the next unit, that they probably are gonna do that.
Okay, okay, gentlemen.
Be a contingency that it's fenced off, just so that, that prevents it.
Well, what, what, what would be your objection to them driving through it?
We're just trying to make it so it's not a, a, a problem for the neighbor, that's, that, we always have to take into account the neighbors, also.
Yeah, but I, I don't think there's anything there that blocks them, or, maybe I'm, again, I have the same problem you have, like, even though I've looked at this plan, it's a little hard to read on the screen.
Okay, gentlemen, okay, anyone here for project? How about against?
Joe, I have a couple of letters that I do wanna read into, uh, the record, uh, we did get comments from our engineering department, uh, Eugene Santa Croch, our principal engineer, um, his comments, and, um, these plans from Mr. Air were submitted to him, um, his first comments were, proposed eight-foot-wide exit driveway on the sou, southerly side of the building is very narrow, if at some future date offenses installed either by this owner or by the property next door, exiting may be hazardous to vehicles and the building. Number two, will new driveway entrance on the northerly side of the building be used as an entrance only? If so, uh, signage, proposed driveway is only twelve feet wide, making entering and exiting of vehicles at the same time dangerous, which, uh, Mr. Air did already, uh, address. Exiting, existing walkway from new steps on the northerly side of the property is church exit driveway, is on the church property, will new owners be required to obtain an easement from the church for this walk? Uh, number four, our proposed parking spaces, number one and two, consider be parking on the front lawn, yes, we did state that, number five, proposed space, number four, will block access to the proposed steps. Number six, what will stop cars from exiting proposed parking areas through the church property, uh, which we just discussed, and seven curb cut permits will be required for new driveways. And then I also have a, um, an email from Ed Noonan, um, who is our deputy police chief, uh, no issues with the, extending the driveway that's currently in place on the south side of the building, however, I have serious concerns with constructing a new driveway adjacent to the Egress roadway for Our Lady of Lourdes School that is located on the north side of the building because of the close proximity to the highly traveled intersection of Proctor Boulevard and Genesee Street. The location of the traffic signal that is currently in place at the intersection of Genesee Street and Proctor Boulevard is aligned with the Egress roadway for Our Lady of Lourdes School in such a way that is essentially, that it essentially makes it a four-way intersection. Constructing a driveway right next to this Egress roadway would cause traffic congestion and confusion, and potentially cause, could be dangerous for motorists passing through this intersection. We also have a letter, uh, from Our Lady of Lourdes Church, to the members of the zoning board of appeals, please accept this correspondence, in opposition to the proposed area variance in the application to reduce the number of parking spaces and use the front lawn for parking at twenty-three oh six Genesee Street. As pastor of Our Lady of Lourdes Roman Catholic Church, which owns the property adjacent to the proposed variances, we must object to such changes which are a danger to our neighborhood and especially to our children who go to and from our school. The alteration of the sidewalks and driveways would make it very hazardous for pedestrian traffic and automobile traffic coming out of our school parking lot. On behalf of our entire parish, we would ask that you reject this application for the sake of our children and all Uticans who traverse the streets and walkways near twenty-three oh six Genesee Street. Thank you for your consideration and your attention in this matter, very truly yours, Reverend Joseph Salerno Pastor.
Anyone else?
Yes, uh, this is Celeste Friend, councilwoman for the South, for South Utica, for this area, I've heard from a number of constituents this week who are all opposed to this, uh, these are people who live, um, on the, the first sort of few houses up Proctor, and also on the very corner of Proctor and Genesee, as the deputy chief already said, this is already a problematic intersection, it is essentially a four-way intersection because of the Egress from the Lady of Lourdes parking lot, so you're talking about, at a, at a four-way stop, four-way lighted stop, adding a driveway right next to that, and it's gonna lead to a lot of confusion, it's already sort of a difficult intersection that we ought to try to improve, uh, this will only make matters worse, so, and there are, um, as I say, I've spoken to several constituents, uh, this week who are really concerned about this project, and, uh, really do not want this extra driveway added, and this idea of having two driveways, uh, virtually next to each other, at a, at a busy problematic intersection to begin with, thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Okay, anyone else against? Okay, any motions?
Can I address this couple of those issues, or no?
Well, we're, 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 thank you, sir, we're, we're through with that section. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to deny. Any seconds?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, could I ask what you are, what you are denying, are you just denying the variance for parking? Or you're denying the entire plan?
I believe it's the entire application, isn't it, Patty?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the request here was for a variance on the number of parking spaces, not for review or approval of the actual design. Because by denying this application, you basically are causing this thing, this, uh, property to be an island and have absolutely no parking.
If there is, if there is a proposed purchaser of the property, and they have a parking plan that works for them, you are certainly welcome to, they're welcome to apply for a specific plan that fits this project.
It's a five thousand square foot building, right in South Utica, it needs more parking. The only way to add parking is by putting a curb cut in the front, there is no other way of doing it. So if you deny that, you're creating a property that's worthless, that's gonna end up being boarded up, and, and eyesore for the next twenty years.
Mr. Drew, I'm, I'm sorry to say, but that's hard to prove when it's, when it's been existing for several years, as it has.
Using, using that, just to, you just read an objection from Lady of Lourdes who wants, wants to buy, have the building given to them, so they are denying us parking, and now they're trying to deny us parking on our own land, so that they can force our hand to give them the property.
Lady of Lourdes, Lady of Lourdes, hold on Patty, Lady of Lourdes did not deny your, your application, the zoning board of appeals.
I know, they're objection, they're objecting to the application, they're trying to force the property to, to be not usable.
Your application's been denied, thank you.
Application for the variance, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Yeah, Patty, I'd like to go on record in the fact that Mr. Santa Croch never sent me his comments, you indicated that he had.
I, I don't know that I said that, I apologize, but, I just, he made comments to, to our department, and he was basing it on the plan that I submitted to, to him. That you submitted to me, that I.
Well, I don't know if it's recorded, but what I heard you say was that they had been forwarded on to the engineer, so that we could have had a proper, uh, dialogue with him responding to what he brought forward, and the same thing would have been true.
I don't believe I said that, I don't believe I said that, I apologize if I did, but I didn't mean that.
Well, that's what I heard, I'm sorry, that's okay, I just making that point for the record.
Okay.
This meeting's adjourned.
All right.
I'd like to thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yes, yes.
Bye.
Let me guess, it must be Tom Drew's calling me. Let me guess, it must be Tom Drew's calling me.